First of all, Happy New Year to members of the dais and to the audience and anybody listening. We're expecting 2021 to be better than 2020, but that's not saying much since 2020 was such a bear of a year. But anyway, let me call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of January 4th, 2021, and the time is 10:00 a.m. And the first item on the agenda is a presentation from Mr. Hayden, Director of the Office of Equal Opportunity, to give us an update on the minority women business enterprise. Mr. Hayden?
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, Commissioners, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Fana. My name is Frank Hayden. I am the Director of the Office of Economic Opportunity. And first of all, let me wish all of you a Happy New Year. I join in the mayor. I think 2021 is going to be better than 2020, simply because it's 2021. I'm going to provide you with an update as requested by Commissioner Lambert in terms of where we are with our MBE program. I'd like to share with you where we are with our SBE program because that ties in greatly with our MBE program. On our first slide, it kind of gives you an update of the SBE and MBE programs. And the SBE program, as you know, was the spur creation of small businesses and promote their success. The city has implemented various programs and initiatives that assist all types of business owners, whether they are creative, startup, or growth phase. Our M/WB program is to address disparities that show minority and women-owned businesses face multiple challenges in various compared to those owned by non-minority men. These are the requirements for, to meet our objective as SBEs. And this is small business enterprise with gross revenues on an average over three years do not exceed these numbers that we have listed here. For the MBE requirements, MBE/WB business must have a business tax receipt issued from Palm Beach County or the City of West Palm Beach. The MBE business must be at least 51% minority or women-owned. This lists the history of our progression and growth. As you know, the disparity study was commissioned in 2016 through 2017. The results of that study were brought to you in 2018. We implemented the program in 2019, and the ordinance went into effect in April of 2019. The recommendations are implementation of those that are listed below. I won't read through those, but they are there for your knowledge. This also continues on to share with you the things we have done to help this program go. We have published an M/WB utilization report. We conducted M/WB program outreach campaigns, events, articles, newsletters, et cetera. We've modified software to track two programs, and that is the Oracle and Prism. Legal authored language to be included in solicitations and contracts in spring of 2019. Mason Tillman consulted to extend language in our solicitation for professional service. That was the fall of 2019. And the inclusion of the M/WB goals in solicitations is ongoing. These are the strategies that we have used to grow our programs. The SBE/WB MBE goals in solicitation. Our sheltered market program that you know we run through our SBE program. 2019 was a low year, but the pandemic had a big impact on that. But as you see, for 2018, 2019, we did a million. And for 2017 and 2018, we did 1.1 million. And those are contracts that we have sheltered that only SBEs can participate in. We have the bid equalization, and that enables us to level playing fields between certified programs and non-certified programs. We have points that are given to primes that include SBEs and M/WBs participation in solicitation. And then the most important piece is we have a contract compliance to ensure that when contractors say they're going to utilize a particular firm and they're paying that firm, that we monitor that to make sure that occurs. These strategies increase the number of certified firms through our outreach events. We have an agency reciprocal with Palm Beach County, the school district, and the South Florida Water Management District. And prime contractor engagements. Our MBE/WB program goal achieved in 2020. We educated the business community about the city's procurement process and the benefits of becoming an SBE and/or M/WB certified. Ten events were planned in 2020. We had a business at the ballpark, take the leap, and first wins, these, et cetera. We modified the software to track two programs, which is the SBE and the M/WB as an Oracle and Prism. And we created something that's called a Lambert Report. And I will share with you what that is a year ago. A matter of fact, Commissioner, you wanted some information on the number of contracts that were let prior to our implementation of the M/WB. What we discovered upon that request is that Oracle and the FileNet did not communicate with each other. So we had to work very closely with our IT department so that we could generate that information for you. Under the past, when we'd ask for it, it would spit out hundreds and thousands of names and information. But we finally got that corrected, and it's down pat. And I happen to have a copy of that with me today if you'd like to see it. And I'll make it available to the rest of the commissioners at the end of this presentation.
So you mean we all get a copy of the Lambert Report?
Yes, yes, sir, definitely.
I feel so honored. Wow. How do you get a report named after you?
Better things you could have named.
Increase the participation of SBEs and WBS/MBEs and competitive solicitation with the city and through our reciprocal certification. One of the things I'm very happy and pleased about is we've exceeded our SBE goals for fiscal year 19, fiscal year 20. The city's goal is 15%, set by this commission. This gives a certification statistic. SBE certifications at the end of 2020, we had 343. In fiscal year 19, we had 309. Now, that number continually fluctuates, and that's because we have people who outgrow our program. We have some people who decide they no longer want to be in our program. And so we are constantly indicating to people and helping them to understand the benefits of being a part. For our M/WB certification at the end of 2020, we have 100. As you remember, last year when I was with you, we were at zero. We are not happy with that number. We're not happy with our SBE number. But we are working hard every day to increase opportunities with individuals. And I think the biggest piece which is going to help us is that as more and more solicitations are going out, when more and more M/WBs and SBEs are part of our solicitations, more people will want to get on board. Total dollars competed and spent in fiscal 2020 was roughly about $72 million. Now, these are competitive dollars. These are dollars for IB, I'm sorry, RFPs, RFQs, and ITBs, and that's an invitation to bid. So those are our competitive dollars, which is rounded out as about 72 million. In the first quarter for our SBE utilization, we spent close to $3.2 million with our SBEs, or 19%. In the second quarter, we spent $4 million, or 21% SBE participation. In the third quarter, we did 3.1 million, or 16% of SBE participation. In the fourth quarter, we did $2.4 million, or 16% SBE procurement percentages. Total completed dollars spent in 2020 was, as I said, rounded out to roughly 72 million. Total dollars spent with SBE in 2020 was almost $13 million. And that number was 18% of the SBE utilization, which as you know, exceeds the 15% that you as a commission set. These are some stats from the year. And I think the important one that I'd like to point out to you is the number of solicitations that we did that included the M/WB participation goal. One of the biggest things is we had in our general engineering contract where we received 83 responses, all of them have M/WB participation. We are still evaluating those proposals. So as a result, there have not been any dollars which have been generated. As you know, you just approved the security contract, which also has M/WB participation. So it's our anticipation that by the second quarter, that you'll begin to see dollars that are being generated or spent as relates to the M/WB program. As I said before, the city's goal is 15% as set by this commission. The city's SBE program has consistently achieved between 15 and 18% utilization, prime and subcontractor dollars. We are suggesting, or when asked and worked with our legal department is, I think because we've done such a good job for a number of years of exceeding what you have asked us to do, I'd like to ask you to increase that number. I think we can do over, or at least 18% on a regular basis. And if we get the challenge, then that makes us work that much harder to get it. So I'll work with our legal staff in terms of putting together some language that we can bring back to you all for your approval. With our success with our programs, if in the upper left-hand corner, I think all of you are familiar with that individual, Theus Sullivan, you might also remember that last year I came to you with some banks, and I asked you to approve a relationship between the city and these banks. Well, as you know, Theus always likes to be out front, and they have done an outstanding job from Valley in working with our vendors in terms of assisting them. I am scheduling some meetings with the other two banks who have not quite stepped up to the table to kind of motivate them to get involved because I think that's important if we're going to be able to assist our vendors in terms of helping them get done what they need to do. Before I entertain questions, my new boss would like to share some info as well.
Thank you, Frank. Commissioner, Mayor Commissioners, Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator, Happy New Year again to everyone. And I want to thank Frank and his staff. As you heard, they've done a great job of not only meeting the goals but exceeding the goals. And you may have heard him mention the Office of Economic Opportunity in his introduction. And so I wanted to kind of bring you up to date on a transition that we're in the process of, which is kind of bringing the Office of Equal Opportunity to the next level and making it the Office of Economic Opportunity. And you know, we've had an Office of Economic Development for a while, and it's done a great job, provided a lot of assistance to different businesses. But we're going to begin to focus some of the funding that we had under those programs to our small minority-owned businesses. So we're going to expand Frank's position with his staff to not just look at our procurement opportunities with the city, but also to provide some direct assistance through loans and grants on the funds that we have budgeted. And we're also working with Housing Community Development on some potential funding through CDBG funds, through the CARES Act, and other opportunities that we may be able to partner there and leverage some of those funds. So I'll be updating the mayor and the city commission over the next 30 days or so. Frank and his team along with the HCD is looking at some options, kind of put together a framework, and they're going to finish that. And we'll come back to you on what that may look like. But I just wanted to update you on what we're doing there. Also, on COVID economic recovery assistance, we had a loan program, as you all probably remember, back in, we started, we started very quickly. We were the first ones out the gate, I think, when it came to providing economic assistance to small businesses. So it was around April that we started this program. So I wanted to give you a quick update of where we are on that. We received about 127 applications. We got more applications that were incomplete. And so these are, I'm just giving the ones that were completed and submitted. 127 applications completed. Forty-six of those applicants were denied because they were different reasons. They may have been out of the city limits, they didn't meet the minimum qualifications, and some of them just withdrew their applications. Thirty-four are still pending, depending on whether we can get any more funding together. We do have the room for a little more funding, funding a couple more potential loans over the next month, but we're just about out of money. And then 47 applications that actually closed, including, we had three, I think, in the last two weeks of the year. So in some cases, just folks took a long time to give us the information we needed, or we had obviously staffing changes with Chris Ruge moving over to CRA, so that caused a bit of a delay as well. But we've gotten a tremendous amount of great feedback on this particular program. And so this economic development loan program is being used as somewhat of a model moving forward with whatever we move forward with on minority and women-owned businesses. And we may do a grant, we may do a combination of grant and loan, but this will be a model for that. And we already have a tracking system in place to track these loans, and that could be used for the new program as well. Just to give you a little glimpse of where their loans were allocated, you'll see on the left-hand side, that's citywide. So we're pretty well spread out throughout the city. And then there's a kind of a closer view of downtown businesses that received assistance. And I plan on the next two or three weeks, sending out a survey to all the businesses that received assistance so we can get some feedback from them on what went well, what we could improve upon. But the feedback I've gotten personally has been overwhelmingly positive, and folks thanking us for being there and helping them out. I'd be curious to see the loans we provided, all these businesses still in business, because it was, going into this thing, we figured that a lot of them would not make it. And so I only know of one that actually didn't make it. So once we do the survey, we'll figure that out. But it's been a resounding success, and we hope to expand upon it. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. And with that, we'll go ahead and open it up for questions for Mr. Hayden or myself.
Thank you, Mr. Fana and Mr. Hayden. A very fine presentation. So, Mr. Hayden, if I heard you correctly, we're going to really get the NWBE program cranked up. We've got some competitive bids out there. We're looking at, all of those have included the NWBE requirement. So as those contracts get awarded, we'll actually start seeing dollars awarded to those companies. Is that, did I hear you correctly in that?
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. That is the case. I mentioned, for example, the security contract that was just approved by this body. That has an M/WB subcontractor. And once the invoices start coming in from that and we make payment, we'll start tracking those dollars. I think the biggest one is going to be our general engineering service. I'm not sure how many contracts we're going to end up, but I would guess they're going to be higher than 20. And each one of those have an SB, I mean a WB, MBE component of it. So those will also be dollars. And that's why I said I think by the second quarter, third quarter at the latest, you should begin to see solid numbers about the M/WB.
So can you come back to us maybe in the beginning of the third quarter and give us an update?
And I will, Mr. Mayor. And we do generate a quarterly report that shows expenditures for SBEs and WBS that we do provide to you, but I'd be more than happy to come back and share that information directly with you, sir.
And the other thing I'd like for you to talk about, Mr. Hayden, is how we track those dollars. We do have protocols in place where we can ensure that those MWBs are getting paid the dollars that the general says they're paying, correct?
You're right, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. Because I would like to pretend that I'm able to do all this by myself, but that is not true. I have two of the most dynamite individuals working for me that I think exist, not just in this city but in this county. And that's Sandy Hammerstein, Sandy. And I call him my number man, but that sounds a little funny. So that's Alex.
Yeah, because you're from Detroit.
Yeah, that's right.
You've got to be careful with that.
It could have a different implication. But it is their job to monitor that. Sandy appears for the pre-proposals, pre-solicitation, and she talks to the primes about the availability of the M/WBs and the SBEs. When the invoices come in, Alex then takes those and takes the numbers off of there that are being spent to the SBEs and MBEs, and he starts to tally that. And to make it even better, once we determine that the contractor is doing or providing the funding as they should, we're fine. If we find that they're not paying on the time they've had, they're behind, they receive a letter.
Okay.
And I like to classify that as a nice letter. But then if nothing happens, and we normally give them 30 days to correct that, if nothing happens, then they get the nice nasty letter after that. And if nothing still occurs, then we get with legal to see if there's something we can do to terminate. But yes, we do monitor those dollars, and it makes a big difference. I must tell you that prime contractors are stepping up to the plate and making the payments to the SBEs and MBEs the way we want them to without any concern. We have not had one instance that I can remember where we've had to physically cancel a contract because the prime was not doing what they should have.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Hayden, for the presentation, and I'm honored to have a report named after me. One of my favorite sayings in business and in life is what's measured gets done. And I'm a big believer in setting goals and monitoring them to evaluate whether or not we're meeting and achieving them or whether or not things need to be adjusted. So I really appreciate this, and I look forward to reading that detailed report. In addition to the story that the numbers tell, something that I think is really important and that you've brought to us in the past are anecdotal examples of what's going on. And I appreciate the explanation you just gave about contract compliance, and I very much appreciate you recognizing your team. It's always a pleasure to see who else is working and making the magic happen. But I was just wondering if you have any, you know, anecdotal stories about either success or maybe something that was a struggle that, you know, because staff's attention to it, we were able to right the ship?
Off the top of my head, I cannot think of a, I was looking at Sandy, but she was ignoring me, I see. But I will say this. We have had meetings with prime contractors where we've talked to them about payments, the use of their sub. We had one just recently where the prime wanted to change their sub, which we have to explain to them, if it's a SBE or an M/WB, you have to have our permission to do that. You just can't make it happen. And so we met with them, we talked to them, we investigated what their concern was about their sub and what they were not doing. And we talked to the sub to find out if that was accurate and true. At the end of the day, we got back with the prime, and we said to them, yep, you're in your rights, you can substitute this person, but it has to be the same caliber, they have to be a certified person, and the work that you're providing for them has to be the same that was contracted with this individual. Things worked out, everybody seemed to be happy. The sub that was leaving was happy to be going away, and they got paid everything they should have. So I think in that sense, that was a plus and a win-win for everybody.
Mr. Fana, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, just a quick thing that I failed to mention, and it's related to what you just said. And I've asked a couple of small businesses that I'm aware of who've come to me asking about how they can get opportunities to make sure they register for our minority small business or minority women-owned business registration. And a couple of them have contacted me later and thanked me because they've gotten the solicitations and gotten emails from Sandra regarding the solicitation. So it's really important, and I'm going to, I'll ask staff to send all, to you all, the link so that you can send it to your business contacts that they register, because the more folks that are registered, the more opportunities that they'll be getting directly into their email box. And it's specific to them and to what their, the type of business that they have. So it's very, it's very effective if you can get the businesses registered.
And, Mr. Hayden, we're continuing to have programs, events, where we're trying to reach out to minority and women-owned businesses to try to boost that number of folks who actually register with us, correct?
Yeah, you are absolutely correct, Mr. Mayor. We have a quarterly event that this, my department puts on. Matter of fact, we have one coming up on February 17. These are virtual events. But we also team up with others, the school board. We've teamed up with the Solid Waste Authority to participate in there. So the answer to your question is yes. We are continuously sharing and promoting opportunities for people to come do business with the City of West Palm Beach.
Great. Commissioner, you had a follow-up?
I did, thank you. And thank you for that, because I think part of the other reason for having these updates is not just so that we know, but so that the public knows what's going on as well. So thank you for that. I just wanted to make sure I understood a slide that was shown early on. It was the comparison over the last three years. And Mayor, I think this is what you were maybe asking about as well, is that it said for 1920 fiscal year, it was 80,000, I think, was the awarded contracts. Was that just for the MWBE program? And then because later in the slide, I saw, you know, a much higher number, and it seemed like that was just for SBE.
She's referring to the sheltered market. Yes. And that's what I thought. There's a slide in there that talks about sheltered market contracts. And you're right, for fiscal year 1920, it was only $80,000. The other two years thereafter was a million, a million-one. And as I indicated, that was because of the pandemic, that we had to cut back on the amount of sheltered market programs that we were doing. Because in that, we have to first do a survey out there to find out how many certified SBEs are available to do that particular work. And so it was just not possible, or we weren't able to do as many in that year. So that was strictly with sheltered market and not for the overall MBE and WBE. And you might remember, when I spoke to you last year, I talked about for our M/WB program about a sheltered market, but as I did some further investigation and work with legal, that we can't do that in our MBE/WB program. We can only do it in our SBE program.
That's right.
So that's why you only see the numbers for SBEs as opposed to the M/WBs.
Thank you for that reminder, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Commissioner Fox, and then Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you so much for this presentation. I was just curious, how do you decide which bids can be put out for the sheltered market? Is it just determined by the size of the contract, or is there something else that goes into it?
For sheltered market, per the ordinance, it is for contracts that are half a million dollars or less, $500,000 or less. Also, in order to shelter it, we have to have a minimum of three firms who can provide that service before we can shelter it. That's why we go out and do a survey to find out who's out there and who's possibly interested. If we can't get a minimum of three firms, then we don't shelter the contract. If we get bids back on it and we've sheltered it, but the bids are not in the best interest of the city, then we will not award the contract. We'll cancel it and put it back out for a competitive level for it to participate in. So it is driven by dollar value as it relates to what we can shelter and what we cannot shelter. And we attempt to shelter as many contracts as we possibly can, but we have to work very closely with the departments by which these projects are. Because in our mind, we think small businesses can do everything, and a lot of the departments are like, well, yeah, that might be true, but this is an important piece, and we need to... but this is an important piece, and we need to make sure we get the best to perform these jobs for us out there.
Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you very much for the presentation. My question is around actually COVID recovery loans, which I know covers a lot of our small and minority-owned business community. Just kind of going back in history, when COVID hit, under the mayor's leadership, we had the COVID Recovery Program, and we were one of the first to get dollars on the street to our small businesses. So, you know, kudos to this department, getting this loan program together as quickly as possible and dollars out to our businesses. One of the things that we discussed from the economic development perspective was potentially as COVID progressed and the county came up with money, et cetera, turning this program into a forgivable loan program. So is there a way to start that discussion to try to further help our small businesses? I'm unsure of the reimbursement dollars that we receive from the county, how much goes towards this, et cetera. But I think it's a worthwhile conversation and a very needed one for our small businesses that are still very much struggling.
Yes, thank you. So the first year that this program was established, the first year that the loans is an interest-only payment, which amounts to about, I think it was like $19 a month. And so we're, you know, we'll be into that first year here in a couple of months. So I think that is a discussion we can go, if you all are open to that, we can go ahead and have that discussion. I'm also, I've asked Valley National Bank, who is servicing the loans for us, to give me a report on how that's going in terms of the repayment. Are the loans being able to be repaid? And based on that data, then we'll bring that back to you, and you can make a decision as to whether you want to turn that into a forgivable grant product as opposed to a loan. We also have a couple other factors, and that is some of the funds that were provided to the downtown businesses were done by the DDA. And there was also funds from the CRA for both the Northwood area and the historic Northwest. So we'll have to make it, they'll have to make, hopefully, a joint decision as to where we move forward, because we don't want, we don't want it to be a mixed bag in terms of having some being loans and some being grants. And I think the DDA, from what I understand, their board is open to going ahead and forgiving those moving forward. So as long as we're all on the same page, then we can do so.
Thank you. It was a topic of conversation during our subcommittee, and it came up during the rollout. And I think the thought from our panel on the subcommittee was that we needed to not put impediments to rolling this program out as soon as possible, and we could revisit it. I've heard from a number of businesses that were very grateful to receive funds, but had indicated too that if there was a way to modify, it would very much, of course, help their business and bottom line. So sitting as one-fifth of this board and under the direction of the mayor, of course, I would like to entertain that conversation.
I'm happy to have the conversation. I think one of the things we need to look at is their retention of employees. And so if they have been successful in keeping the business operating and have been able to retain the number of employees that they had going in, what I would hate to do is somebody, while they may be operating on a shoestring, they've had to let people go, which is unfortunate. But I want to encourage those businesses that have been able to keep employees at the same or even a greater level. So, but we can have the conversation, a broader conversation about the parameters of that.
Yeah, and I'll make sure include that in the survey. How many employees have they been able to keep? A lot of them are just, might be just a mom-and-pop business, but as long as they're still in business, then they kept those jobs for themselves, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from Commissioners? Okay, very good. Before they hear even more information, certainly receiving a copy of the Lambert report as soon as possible.
Thank you. We'll get it to you before the day is over.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, item two, city facilities naming rights discussion. Commissioner Fox, you asked for this to be on the agenda?
Thank you. Well, a few months ago, when we were going through the budget process, I just started looking around at other cities, what they were doing to increase revenue and were there opportunities that we weren't taking advantage of. And I'm a marketing person, so the first thing that, you know, struck me was that a lot of cities do advertising in different ways. They have advertising in their garages, they have, Philadelphia has advertising on their sanitation trucks, you know, some websites or newsletters or trolleys and other things like that, you know, are big revenue generators for other cities. And one of the other opportunities was the city facility rentals or naming opportunities. And we already have a precedent, I think with the Mandel, that, you know, I was never 100% sure how that came to be. So I think it was just something that I have been talking to our city attorney about, and, you know, what were the opportunities to move forward? If we wanted to name other city facilities, the Lake Pavilion or Parks, for example. You know, I don't obviously want to just commercialize our city. I don't want to have the Citibank City of West Palm Beach. But I was just curious, if we wanted to look at those opportunities down the road, what would be involved?
Madam City Attorney, you want to address that initially, and we'll continue the discussion?
Sure, we had a conversation, number one. The first question is, can we do this? And the response was, under the city's home rule of powers and authority granted to the city, that it would be within one of the powers that the city could do. The bigger question and the question for the board is, what would it look like if you decided that that's what you wanted to do and set the parameters of what the program would look like? What type of buildings or property would the city want to include? What type of charitable contributions would be required in order to name? What would be the guidelines around the naming? And all of those types of questions would have to be answered by the board. And in putting together a program like that, one of the things the city would want to do would be to do, as the Commissioner indicated, look at, look around the state of Florida and around the country. What do other programs look like, what type of things have been considered? And to avoid unintended consequences of naming facilities. I think that Mark had an example of an issue that arisen or arose in a naming and the subsequent criminal charges against somebody that a building was named after. So there are just things that you want to think about when you put your program together. But the short of the long is that, yes, it can be done. The long is, how do you want to do it?
Well, one question I had is, can the proceeds from any such program, could that, those proceeds go into the general fund? Or do they need to be segregated for certain purposes? Do we need to form a nonprofit so that there is a charitable giving?
Again, it's how do you set up your program? And I think that what you're describing is exactly what happened for the naming of the Mandel Library. There was a nonprofit put together, the charge of that nonprofit was to raise funds specifically for the Mandel Library. And those funds went directly to the library based on how it was set up. That doesn't necessarily mean that you couldn't set it up in a different manner where the funds would go to a, to the general fund, let's say. But the question then becomes, would you have donors who were willing to allow the funds to go to the general fund as opposed to a specific program like the Parks or the library or the, what it is that they're giving their money for?
Did you have a follow-up, Commissioner, since this is your item?
I've had more of an opportunity, I think, to talk to the city attorney about it than anyone else. I don't know if there's other questions. I think, you know, in my experience in just marketing, I know that in terms of, some things are marketing dollars where, let's say, someone wants to have, the benefit is that it helps their business. And then others are written off as charitable expenses, like the Mandel. So I think that those are two different ways of looking at it. I think when I first brought it up, it was more so because I think in the next year or two, we're still looking at difficult budgeting years and trying to find new ways to have money for the general fund. You know, if we're going to have, you know, situations like we did in the last year where it comes to time to take a hard look about what things might need to be cut. And instead, if we could find other ways to increase our revenue that we're not doing right now, that's kind of where my mind was when I came up with this.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, Madam President?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner, for bringing this to the agenda. And I'm certainly supportive of finding other ways to, you know, generate revenue for the city. And the way that I kind of break this down is it seems like there are two facets. There's a corporate sponsorship facet, of which we have examples within the county of Fit Team of the Palm Beaches, Roger Dean Stadium, et cetera. And the one that probably concerns me a bit is on the naming rights. And I think that there's a way to do it so that we can try to level the playing field. Because it tends to be an issue of generational wealth where those who have money to donate to causes can. And it really comes to light issues of systemic racism and other, you know, issues being tackled by the mayor's task force as well. And so I think as we're looking at this, we need to be mindful to be able to create opportunities so that as we are generating revenue and we're naming buildings, we're also having the naming of those buildings reflect the diversity of our community and the various interests throughout the community and not just to the highest dollar. So that would be something that I think we can look at the program and create a mechanism that would potentially help mitigate those circumstances.
Okay, any other questions, comments? I guess I'll ask Commissioners, is there sufficient interest to give direction to staff to maybe research best practices from other municipalities around the country and maybe present that information to us for a follow-up conversation? Yes, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. And Commissioner Fox, thank you for bringing this up. I agree, I think it's, you know, we're in this day and age where we need to be creative and thinking about where our income is coming from and how we might need to adjust. I would be interested in hearing a little bit more details about how this might move forward. You know, from a fundraising background, envisioning all of the moving parts. And so something that would be important to me would be to know, you know, I would think we would need a dedicated staff person to this, at least to get it going. And so what is the cost of that? And what is the cost, what amount will we be able to bring in? I'm definitely leaning more towards the idea of, it seems more feasible, the corporate sponsorship, you know, of amphitheater or amphitheater, some other areas where we might be able to provide some advertising in exchange for their contribution. But, you know, I would like to see some of the numbers and how that plays out.
Well, why don't we see if we could find examples of other programs from around the country and bring it back, Commissioner Nearing?
Thanks. I too agree that I would be interested in seeing what maybe some of the feedback would be. I would caution, given the city administrators' comments to us during the last budget session, that to me, the return on investment would need to be immediate, and it would need to be twofold. In other words, what I think I've heard is we have staff who are stretched now, and to add something else to their plate is probably not a good idea. So doesn't mean, and I appreciate Commissioner bringing this up, doesn't mean that obviously we want to be bold in ways to find new sources of income or resources. But I am empathetic to, you know, our staff and the fact that they're, you know, Robin Peter to pay Paul in terms of their scope of work as it currently sits. So that would be my only caution, but I'm pretty sure everyone agrees on that point.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, is that something, that, just that level of research, is that something that can be done relatively easily without much strain from your staff?
Mr. Parks wanted to speak as well.
Yeah, approach, Mr. Parks?
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator Johnson and staff. I just wanted to say, I've done this, I've worked with these in the past. Some larger projects, for instance, we did a convention center in the city of Cleveland, as well as the stadium for the Cavaliers and Indians. And the way it worked out for the smaller one, which was the convention center, which was funded by county dollars, was that we hired a consultant, and this consultant works specifically in the naming rights realm. And they do sponsorships and naming rights for cities and colleges, and this is what they do every day. And just to give you an example, we paid this one vendor $500,000 to find someone to do the naming rights, and it was a contingency contract. So we paid half upfront, and then they had to produce a sponsor. So for the convention center, we received a deal that was $400,000 a year, and it escalated with the inflation. And we paid that consultant a half a million dollars. So they work on contingency, you know, like a fixed plus contingency. And this particular company works throughout the country and probably throughout the world with colleges and naming rights. So it really didn't take a lot of staff time, it was just a matter of a contract. So I just wanted to offer that, since that question was.
And I appreciate that. And I think that before we move to that level, let's, I'd like to see a handful of examples from other cities, and then we could get into the weeds as to how any such program, if we decide to go that route, could be staffed. But let's not get ahead of our skis on this one.
And then to answer your question, Mayor, yes, I think that I could assign somebody from my office to pull some resolutions or ordinances that created such programs and to inquire as to the success of those programs and get some numbers behind them.
Yeah, just some high-level stuff. I mean, we don't need to get into the granular details of how they did it, but let's just see what's out there and bring that back to this body, and we'll have further conversations and get further direction. Madam City Administrator, did I see you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, Mayor, I think my comments were in line with the comments that you just made. And that is, you know, to proceed, you know, sort of sequentially, you know, to do the research and see what's out there, have that follow-up discussion with the board, see what the appetite is in terms of a program, what scale it is. I think we've heard very good comments from Commissioners that need to be taken into consideration if and when we get to the various steps. And depending on where we end up at the end of the different discussions, that will determine, you know, what the staff impact would be. That would determine from a financial standpoint what we can and cannot afford and whatnot, so.
Okay. Anything else at this point? Is everyone comfortable kind of that direction? Okay, okay, let's move in that direction then. I don't have anything on the mayor's matters. Any Commissioners, do you have anything else for this meeting? Madam, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment, I don't know if it's a new template for the new year, but the template that Mr. Hayden used on his PowerPoint was beautiful and fresh. And just a point of administration, if we're looking at these types of updates, one request I might have would be on PowerPoints that have a number of slides, it would be really helpful if they had page numbers on them for when we're referencing back to the slide. Just a minor suggestion, if possible.
Very good suggestion, do we know that we'll pass that on? Anything else for the good of this body? Hearing nothing, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much.